The meeting will come to order. Now, Councilor Lynch, I realize that these minutes will take some time.
Correct.
So, I know that we won't have them for a while. Before I begin, I wanted to thank a number of people who've provided information to the council. The mayor, Monica Kane, our human resource -- I'm still going to call you the human resource director. Jason Dunn, who provided us the agreements that were enforced before. And information we received from the mayor from the Hampshire Trust. I thank you all for giving us information. This is a complicated issue. So, mayor communications, non-Chapter 32B, anything not related to this conversation. It's just part of our agenda. Okay. Public speak. Anybody out there who did not speak at the last meeting would like to say something. Rather than put at the end, I'm going to put it now. This is your time. You spoke at the last meeting.
I would just like to give you some information?
When we get to you.
Okay.
Anything else? Nobody? Okay. Then we're going to continue the business. I would like to open it up to the mayor's side to make final comments and for councilors to ask more questions of anybody from the Hampshire Trust, Melissa, or the mayor. Do you have any final comments you want to make regarding this or other comments?
I mean, one, I just want to make sure everybody got the information that was asked for. I will give a quick update to where we are with the trust and then invite Melissa and Monica for just a couple of comments and then Joe Shea, the executive director of the trust. Today, there was a full vote at the trust meeting around the acceptance of the plan design. And plan design was voted in the affirmative in, which starts to cement the trust health plan and offerings as a member unit. That is now, East Hampton is set with that. I will note that at that meeting, East Hampton voted no against plan design. And we did so, Melissa voted that way on the behalf of the city and upon my request. What does that mean? Is that the plan design still goes forward because there were more affirmative votes than nay votes. But I said that was important. Going forward now, we have a set of healthcare benefits that represent a plan design from the previous year. And that puts us in direct conflict as a city with our collective bargaining agreements, all seven of them.
Just to follow up on that, all seven of our agreements require you to go back to the table if the plan design changes.
There's a plan design, yeah.
That's what I thought I read too, but I want to make sure.
So, that's where we are right now. I am very concerned and will, you know, be coming back to council on February 6th about a plan going forward of how the city will view this on a legal but also on an expense basis as we go through the process of negotiating what happens next and what we're obliged to do under law.
Okay. Thank you.
At that point.
Counselors for the mayor, anybody?
So, as I understand it, the plan has been accepted. You will now meet with the collective bargaining units and see if they can, if they will agree to the new plan and/or what kind of mitigations you can do. Is that correct?
We'll bring, since the vote was just this morning, and Melissa, Monica, and Joe can give a little more detail, can speak to that. But then we'll also talk to Sue Drew from Cooking Associates about what the next step is and prescribed process under 32B. Because there is a procedural steps going forward.
And so, obviously, this was not, you knew this plan was coming and you probably had negotiations with these, preliminary negotiations with the unions and were most of them in compliance? I mean, not in compliance but understanding?
Yeah, we haven't had to have these conversations because we haven't had plan design. So, there are premium changes and there are co-pay changes, which I will give kudos to our finance director, Melissa, for doing a very good job early on in negotiating those costs down. But what triggers this renegotiation and it's why the question before us tonight is the adoption, what I'm putting forward is the adoption of 21 and 22, is that the design, the plan, the design of the plan, the structure of the benefits have changed. And that triggers a conversation with collective bargaining agreements. The question before us tonight is to adopt, I'm asking you to adopt 21 and 22. And it's around the adoption of those two sections of 32B, which then, at this point, if adopted, all of, we would then sit down with all of the employees in the collective bargaining agreements and retirees as one group.
Can I ask you?
And talk about savings, yes.
So, if, all right, let me put it in a nutshell. Your biggest concern is the cost to the city?
And the time.
Well, okay. But for the taxpayers' purposes, the cost to the city of having to negotiate around these healthcare changes with all the units, is that a big issue?
That is a big issue. And I would just go back to the other around time. So, it's a part of the job, but for every hour spent on this particular function and these conversations, there is a cost.
Does labor attorney fees?
Oh, yeah.
Because that negotiation involves labor attorneys.
Sure. And the consultant that you met last week. And again, I guess my frustration and question is, and I will, you know, continue to present it this way, this is not a taking away of collective bargaining rates. And in 2011, when everyone sat down at the table under the Patrick administration, labor was at that table. This is not a whack from management. This was something that came out of long discussions for municipal efficiencies because the process before 21 and 22 was causing very long delays. It will be extremely hard for me to figure out what the cost of health insurance and mitigation is going to be in fiscal year 20. We have spent a lot of time making our budget process and putting dollars away. And while I begrudge no union at all their right to collective bargain and will open up, we have two sets of, you know, collective bargaining sessions coming up with FIRE and DPW, you know, to know and to be able to bargain and stay in the trust so the trust can negotiate the best possible deal as one group of East Hampton employees as the East Hampton member unit in the trust is important. I think it's the fairest thing for all of our employees and our taxpayers. I mean, this is basically, you know, this is on our taxpayers, you know. And I understand that there are, you know, East Hampton employees and valued and our benefits are a big part of why folks like to work in East Hampton. I have to think about the people who live here, who maybe don't work in the city or don't do business in the city. And also, who, you know, the conversation certainly is with the unions, but the conversation is more with taxpayers who don't work for the city. And say, hey, we're about to add 20% to your tax rate for a new school. We're about to comply with federal regulations around stormwater and wastewater. And we're looking at spending or having to spend $22 million over five years. So, this sounds huffing and puffing and scary. It's just a fact. You know, not to, you know, not even to state what, I don't know what's coming at the city. I mean, I would, you know, I'd look at Dan and Joe, you know, and their position on the finance committee much longer, know things come up. You know. I just found out how expensive tires are on fire trucks. They're really expensive.
Okay.
So, that's my, you know, deficiency.
So, and so, was just, it's under your impression that the MTA was probably part of that 2011 negotiations?
I'm told, yes.
Yes.
Can I?
I didn't pull the legislative history.
Bill, do you have anything for the mayor?
My only thing is, you said the new change that just came down, premiums went up because then the proposed plan changed, premiums didn't change.
No, I said, if, I'm sorry. If premiums go up, I said, we haven't had to have this conversation because in the past, it's only been a premium change and a co-pay change. What triggers the conversation here tonight and why I'm asking for 21 and 22 is that there is a plan design change. So, separate from premium and co-pay.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to clarify that, that there's no financial real impact to the city when the premiums don't go up, right? So, this current proposed plan design change, the current one, wouldn't really?
I'll defer to Melissa. I would see an indirect cost to the city.
Okay.
Because of mitigation and resources in the trust and applying that. But I think that they're necessary. I think there's a way to keep things as affordable as they possibly can be.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I? Any more?
I just want to make sure. Tom?
Yeah. All right, I'll try and be concise about this as humanly possible.
I cannot.
I'm just recapping. I wasn't able to make the last one. I watched the video. So, this has happened. The trust has voted for the design changes.
Yes.
Because we are members of the trust, the design changes are happening. The question is, do we figure out the mitigation around that under 21, 22, or do we figure it out the way that we otherwise would have to? That's the big question right now, right?
Yeah, right. And I'm asking for the adoption of 21, 22 to follow that process.
Right. So, I just, I need to fully understand anything before I think about voting for it, which I won't be doing tonight anyway because I'm not a member of this committee. But if we adopt 21, 22, then the way that that process will work is that members of all the bargaining units will get together and handle the mitigation, figure out what to do with the mitigation. You end up having a proposal, you have 30 days to negotiate that. If you can't reach an agreement, it goes to an arbitration board of the state. Is that?
Yes. I mean, the committee that is formed for mitigation are representatives. It's not everyone in a room of all those public employee committee that would go through that.
And then, whatever mitigation gets decided on, whatever that looks like, that's for the first year. And in previous years, those savings go directly to the city who may or may not. What does that look, because there's, people kept talking about this.
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to defer to Melissa, Monica, and Joe on this. Joe Shea, just to make sure I don't, the details of it because it's very confusing. And I'm certainly a newer study to this. I would also ask for the structure of the meeting and that after you hear all comments from pro-adoption and the con against adoption, that we would have, I would have an opportunity to explain or clarify anything we might hear.
Sure.
On the side. Thank you. So, I'm going to?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop discussion until I think everybody's spoken and respoken and rebutted unless it's eight o'clock. If we get that far and we don't have a conclusion to this meeting?
Yes.
We're going to have another meeting.
And one thing I've asked my team is to talk about timeline. So, just timeline as far as where we are with the trust in adopting a plan, you know, and getting the paperwork for that. And there are some concerns about when the trust starts now, the process of implementing plan designs and crunching the final numbers. So, I would defer to?
But this brings up a question.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think anybody wants us to get out of the trust. But the current, without 21 and 22, it may happen that way, which case they could reject the plan design. Is that what you're saying?
The trust wouldn't.
No, no, I'm talking about the employees.
Sure, I mean?
But I haven't heard that that's what they would do. I think what they're looking for in a negotiation, if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Somebody will correct me.
Yes.
Is mitigation in some way to help defray the cost of the new plan, not to get out of the plan design. So, my question is?
Yeah.
If that's the case, and I guess everybody needs to, the employees have to tell you that, then we can go ahead and approve the plan that they've run forward and negotiations toward mitigation come up.
That would come up under, under 21, I don't?
Not under 21 and 22. Right now, the way it is, if that doesn't get adopted, the Hampshire Trust plan that's in front of us?
Yes.
Happens?
Yep.
Unless somehow, the bargaining units say, we want a new plan from a different company. Am I right?
I'm not sure.
Well, maybe.
I'm going to defer to Melissa.
All right.
So, my concern is parity among groups. So, if you individually negotiate seven different contracts, one, there's a timeline problem with the time it takes to do all that. And then, there's the different treatment for different groups. I think the fairest way to go is that we all accept the same mitigation and this is the path to that.
Okay. Okay. But in all of that discussion, leaving the Hampshire Trust, as far as you know, is not on the table.
It is not anyone's, it is not in anyone's best interest to do that.
That's what I think. Okay, thank you. Do you want to, did you want to bring something else up that, because she said you and Monica wanted to say something, Melissa?
So, as far as, you know, because there will be mitigation in a plan design change like this through any bargaining process, the mitigation is the difference between what the cost would have been without plan design versus the cost with plan design. So, we will have to set aside and budget for the mitigation costs, like the actual cost to disperse in some way, shape, or form to be determined under the collective bargaining agreement, no matter which way we go, how to disperse those funds. The other, you know, worst-case scenario, doom and gloom, is we can't come to an agreement before it's time to implement the cost and we have to assume a plan design similar to what we have. And that would inherently have enormous difference in premium costs. But I, I mean, I don't have a quote. I didn't go out and get quotes because that's not anyone's intent. But there is that, that's the, you know, like, what do you do if you can't come to a solution? And we're here at July 1 and we have to move forward.
I'm confused. That worst-case scenario.
Right.
The option, is the option on the table that the employees could reject the plan design, go back to what we had, and then we would incur premium cost changes to make up for that difference. Is that what I'm hearing?
There has to be a negotiation about plan design.
Right.
And so, in order to do that, you know, if you can't come to an agreement, there's sort of a stalemate and then?
This is absent 21 and 22.
Or absent agreement, you know, under the 150E collaborative. I mean, it's just, it's just like the worst of the worst case and I don't think that's anyone's objective. But my argument for 21 and 22 is really parity among groups.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions for Melissa? Monica, did you want to say something? Oh, I thought the mayor indicated you did. Joe?
Sure. Just a couple of things. As the mayor mentioned?
Could you wait until you get to the table?
Okay.
As we're being recorded.
Okay. As the mayor mentioned, the insurance advisory committee met this morning from the trust. And just to give you sort of an update on how the voting went, there was, again, discussion as there always is on what the benefit changes look like and the reasons for it. And the vote, we did have a quorum. We had 84% of the units there on a weighted basis. And on a weighted basis, it was a little under 69% in favor to 15% against it. On a head count unit basis, it was 40 yeses, three noes, and one abstentia. So, again, it was strongly in favor of making these benefit changes. I would just like to reiterate, just from the other Wednesday nights I've been here, just to, I guess, drive home the point that, again, these changes do not impact any of your MedEx subscribers. So, anybody that's 65 and over that's on your MedEx plan, these benefit changes do not impact them in any way, shape, or form. And that's all I had.
Any questions for Mr. Shea? Tom?
So, you guys want to go first here?
Well, I didn't see anybody, Bill. Go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so, I'd ask the mayor a question. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this entire thing. So, I think I have a pretty good idea of how this works in the first year if we were to adopt this. In subsequent years, how does the mitigation work after the first year?
There is none.
There's no mitigation?
It's only in year one.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Is that it?
That's it for me for the time being.
Come on, Melissa.
Wait, wait, wait. I just want to know, and maybe it's Melissa. Is there a projected dollar savings if we adopt this that's out there? You know, if, you know, our budget's 4.9 million under all the insurances for the city, you know, is there a percent of savings that's an average if we adopt this? And that's the first year, we get the 25% negotiated and everything else, is there a ballpark figure? I know we had hypotheticals last week of $1 million and $250,000 would be, I'm just throwing that out there. I know that's not realistic because that's a quarter of our budget and that's not what's going to happen.
Right.
Is there a percent estimate that if we adopt this, this is how much the city saves?
So, Joe's looking to get those numbers. And, I mean, honestly, part of the problem is that as soon as we know what the number is, we must take action within 10 days or the whole thing falls apart. So, I don't know that we want to tell you a number because you can't take, I mean, we're not in a position right now to, the timeline is very prescribed if we were to adopt this particular thing, a particular section of the law. And if we know the number, it would put us in a bad situation to try and negotiate under a legislation that we don't have, we don't currently have here in East Hampton.
Is that 10 days part of the agreement with Hampshire Trust?
No, it's part of the law.
Of 21.
21, 22, yes.
Well, all right, but if we're not in 21 and 22, what's the timing on? I'm just curious. We don't know if this is going to pass the council. I'm just curious what happens. You have to, what is the deadline for the city to say, okay, we agreed to this premium?
July 1, I believe.
The changes?
The changes take place on July 1, so under section 19. I'm not sure what the timeline or what the wording is on 19. I'm familiar with 21 and 22.
I just got confused. Thank you. All right, I got it. Yeah, Joe?
So, 25%, I mean, actually, Melissa, maybe, maybe both of your, I'm not sure who will answer this. A community could put aside more than 25%. Is that correct?
Right. And the other point I wanted to make is that you can have, whatever the pot of the mitigation is, can be distributed over multiple years depending on how you choose, how you choose to roll that out. And so, that's the possibility. And the other, I guess, comment I would have is if, so, say, health insurance is $4 million, to just use a nice round number, and we are saving X percent this year because there's not going to be an increase, next year, there's not really new savings because at best, it will be a zero year again or an increase even with the plan design changes. Does that fair?
Right. I would anticipate, yeah, year two, there will be a premium increase. Granted, we've gone on record to say that with these benefit changes, we don't anticipate any future benefit changes for a three- to five-year time period. This first year, again, there will be a 0% or just no increase to the premium, it'll remain the same. But I really don't see a 0% increase or a 0% change in year two on the premium.
Tom?
Okay, so, when you're calculating savings, are you calculating savings based on what you, what you made last year or based on what you would have made were this plan not adopted?
It's, yes. Again, what we're asking, Blue Cross Blue Shield, is to make another actuarial calculation based on what the changes are and they're going to come back with a value. Last year, the proposed changes had a value of 5.45% where our premium potentially could have been higher by 4, 5.45%. So, we would be using that as the value if we had implemented this last year. So, again, we've asked the Blue Cross Blue Shield actuaries to come back with what the value of these benefit changes are. And that's the savings that we'd be looking to share with the units.
All right. I'm not an actuary and I apologize if I'm being dense here.
I'm not either.
Okay, cool. None of us are actuaries. So, I guess what I'm saying is when we're talking about calculating savings here for the purpose of doing all of this, there is a year-over-year savings if it's like you either do this or you don't do this.
Right. I mean, if we, let's say again.
And in every subsequent year.
Right. If we did not make these benefit changes, let's say, for this upcoming 2020 year?
Yes.
We would have had a premium increase, the difference between the two, the difference of not changing the rates this year to what we would have been changing them to. That's your savings essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for Mr. Shea? Omar?
And just a general procedure, I want, I know we do this in general city council because I think it's important for the people at home. And I can probably summarize here for the people who do speak besides your position or whatever, you could say where you live. Mr. Shea, where do you live?
West Springfield.
West Springfield. And Melissa is West Hampton?
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg. And Monica?
Riverhampton.
Riverhampton. Okay. So, thank you just for, and the mayor is East Hampton.
I think we have a residency requirement there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, now I would like to turn it over to the union representatives. And I promised, Mr. Shea, he could be first.
Thank you. And actually, I got a text in the meantime, that meeting's been canceled due to the weather.
Okay, well, sit back down.
Apparently, I do not have to leave as quickly as I thought I was going to have to. So, Alan Shadle, a representative of the East Hampton Police Department Union. I'm also a 32B committee member, have been for quite some time. I, my residency is in Holyoke.
Okay.
So, what I was going to start with is completely changed because I have a ton of notes to address the things that were just spoken to, spoken about. First of all, I'm glad Joe used the correct terminology. These are benefit changes. These are not plan design changes. They are benefit changes, which is what Joe continued to use. We have had co-pay increases in the past, which do not need to go back to the unions. They are not a collective bargaining issue. They are not anything, as far as I can, I know when we just talked, in anybody's contract. We've had them before. That's what our job is, that the 32B committee is to do, is to come together, discuss these things, take them back to our unions, let them essentially know what's going to happen or potentially could happen. Last year, we knew these things were coming. We were able to lobby, we were able to do some things, and we were lucky enough to have these changes postponed for a year. We knew they were coming. I have emails to document that, that I put it out to my union, these things are coming. So, these are not plan design changes. Mitigation for these changes, as far as I know, as the members of my committee I was just talking to, do not have to happen. So, I'm not sure where that information is coming from. So, this is not a doom and gloom scenario. We already sit down, like I said, as a 32B committee. That is exactly what we're supposed to do. When these changes are coming down the pipe, we know they're coming, we discuss them, we try to figure out how we're going to deal with them. So, again, bargaining with seven different unions or whatever you want, whatever they're all called, is, as far as I'm concerned, as far as we know, is not going to have to So, also, causing very long delays, again, as a 32B committee, we have been many times called to the table very quickly to negotiate or deal with these issues. So, if there's something that comes up, there's no long delay. We can, as quickly as, you know, within a day or two, usually assemble and start dealing with an issue. We want to stay in the trust as well. There's no doubt about that. I don't know of anybody I've talked to anywhere that doesn't want to stay in the trust. As for other financial issues for the city, I apologize, Ms. Mayor, that's not my problem. And that's not our 32B committee issue. I'm not sure why those were brought up, but I don't believe that this is going to be a huge financial issue for the city. In fact, the number that was quoted last year with these changes was a savings of about $750,000 for the trust, which, when the trust has $38 million in it, I don't know that that's a big savings, however, the changes still went through. But that's the number that was thrown out at our, which dated meeting that we had, was going to be a savings. So, the whole purpose of these plan, these benefit changes is to save money, not the cost to city money. So, where it's going to cost the city more money is beyond me. As for parity among groups, that's exactly, once again, why our 32B committee exists. We negotiate and we deal with all these issues. And everything that we deal with, we try to do what's best for the group that we have at the table, including the city. We're very reasonable. We've had major financial issues over the years. And you remember the mid-2000s where we had a lot of financial issues. We've come together, we've come up with solutions that's been good for both sides. And that's across the board for all the city employees, union, non-union. Now, I'm going to go into what I originally wanted to come up here and talk about. A little history of the 32B sections 21 through 23. In 2002 to 2011, healthcare and costs in Massachusetts skyrocketed. I think we all can remember that. It had a huge impact on local budgets.[1796.37] It had a huge impact on local budgets, municipalities were looking to reduce healthcare costs to make changes and to do them quickly. Uh, many of these cities, and a lot of them were Eastern Mass, wanted to move their employees to the newly formed GIC. Starting in two thousand and eight, Massachusetts responded to the rising healthcare cost by making it easier for municipalities and regional school districts to join that GIC. However, um, there is a lot of impasses with unions and a lot of issues with unions and its employees, which present, uh, prevented these cities and towns to adopt changes, whether it be to move to a different healthcare company, or whether it be to move to the GIC. Hence, Governor Patrick stepped in, and on July twelfth, two thousand and eleven, he signed the Act Relative to Municipal Health Insurance, Chapter sixty-nine, the Acts of two thousand and eleven, um, which is designed, I'm gonna, this is exact quote, this is, was designed to ease the health insurance plan design changes and transfer municipal health insurance subscribers to the state's GIC, and it was declared an emergency law. So this financial crisis was so bad that the governor presented this, and it was declared an emergency law that was implemented. Thirty-two B sections twenty-one and twenty-three were enacted, um, they were designed, again, for those cities and towns that were in an impasse with its employees, uh, which, again, most were in the eastern part of the state, to adopt these laws, so these cities and towns adopted these laws, which then allowed, which then allowed them to streamline the process of making changes to the health insurance, which then obviously reduced their costs and the financial burden to the cities and towns. So just a quick summary, because I know there's a lot of confusion. Sections twenty-one, this is just very general, this is right from the law, when you go and click on a link, it kind of gives you a generalization of what each section is. Section twenty-one, matter of changing health insurance benefits, estimation of savings, approval of agreement, immediate implementation, time for review, distribution of savings and regulations, that's section twenty-one. Twenty-two deals with copayments, deductibles, tiered provider network, copayments and other cost share plan, try that again, tiered provider network, copayments and other cost sharing plan design features and increases. Twenty-three, which is the one that we steered away from back in two thousand and thirteen, I believe it was, two thousand and twelve? Thank you, sir. Transfer, it has to do with transfer of subscribers to the commission, uh, to transfer the medical, uh, it has to do with GIC, I'll sum, I'll just summarize that one, because it's kind of a long one, so that basically has to do with the moving to the GIC. We've never been in a city at all, as far as I know, I, like I said, I've been on the thirty-two B committee for seventeen years, we have somebody here that's been a lot longer than me, we've never, ever, ever been in such an impasse that we needed to implement these laws, implement twenty-one through twenty-three. Uh, even during the most difficult times, as I mentioned before, in the mid-two thousands, we worked well together to come to a common ground, we do not need twenty-one through twenty-three, and the city always reserves the right and can implement them at any time. So if we ever get to that point where we can't negotiate, and we have an impasse, and it's impacting the city in such a financial way, we can always implement them at that time, we're not there. And the law, nowhere in this law does it say it's required, mandatory, or a must, it's simply an option. It was a way for the cities and towns to get into or change their health insurance. So the next question that was asked, and I have, why is the trust so interested in these sections? Why do they want these implemented? The trust is financially strong, that's very obvious. I had, up until a little while ago, the bottom line was thirty-eight million dollars that the trust had April twelfth of two thousand and eighteen, there's some new numbers, I don't have, I didn't read them, but there, I know there are some new numbers, but the trust is financially strong, as far as I understand, those numbers have stayed about the same. June seventeenth of last year, uh, we were told by Joe that the biggest loss in the cost to the trust and to the city is prescription medication. However, since that time, there was an error, loophole, whatever you want to call it, Joe maybe can even clarify what it was. There was no regulated cost, for lack of better terms, across the board for what people were paying. Some people were paying a higher cost, some people were paying a lower cost, and what that ended up doing, that ended up being, I believe, is five point five million dollar loss every year to the trust. They found that, they've negotiated since, and they now have stabilized that prescription line, and at the time, let's see, uh, yeah, so the, uh, that has stabilized. Do we need to listen? Maybe it is doom and gloom, I apologize.
No, no, I think it's just the closing, the lady in school.
Okay, okay, I'm, so I'm almost finished, so anyway, since then, that that line, financial line is stabilized, and there's been a significant, and that's what I've, we've been told, a significant financial savings to the trust as a result of finding that that error. So, again, going back to the question, why? As I read, these are all the laws, very boring to read, but I read them multiple times, as I got to section two, essentially, I'm gonna read the whole thing, the Board of, Board of a Trust or Joint Purchase Group established by two or more governmental units may vote to implement changes to copayments, deductibles, tiered provider network, copayments and other cost design changes, features which do not exceed those in appropriate public authority, under section twenty-two.
I think we've read the law, Joe, I don't think you have to read it.
So it's, 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 okay, it's Alan.
Alan, I'm sorry.
It's okay, sir, so.
I have a lot of Joes here.
I'm horrible with names, too, but the reason I mention that, the reason I mention that is because I believe that what that reads, the way that reads, is if section twenty-one and twenty-two are adopted, it allows the trust to streamline decisions, although we understand that we don't, as a union, we can't necessarily negotiate with them, right now, as a union, uh, we have a strong voice, we demonstrated that last year. Uh, we can ask questions, voice concerns, um, and lobby for reasonableness, which is what we did last year. In conclusion, if any of the, um, sections of twenty-one through twenty-three are adopted, we, as a, as unions, lose that voice, changes can arbitrarily be made by the trust. Those changes can have a dramatic financial effect on the city and its employees. So if you want to talk about financial issues, if these are adopted and people, and the trust is allowed to arbitrarily make changes without any type of voice, without any type of input, that's where the.
We'll give you a chance, Melissa.
Fan, that's where the financial, um, issues could could be. Our thirty-two B committee is strong, we've been, we've had a long history of success in keeping our healthcare costs low, coming to reasonable conclusions, uh, and to resolving issues that are beneficial to both sides. Uh, I'd ask that we please don't try to fix something that's not broken, and it is the official position of East Hampton Police Officers Union that we, we respectfully request that this committee not recommend the adoption of sections twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
I can ask every union representative here. If we had an agreement, nineteen ninety-nine.
Yes, sir.
There's a new agreement, hypothetically, that agreement prevents individual bargaining units from having language in their contracts, which would supersede whatever this agreement is with the IAC. Would you be okay with that?
I would say that, yes, when I.
Only regarding healthcare.
Regarding healthcare, which is.
So if there's a collective group, mitigation, plan, design, everything, and that group makes a decision, individual bargaining units can't decide on their own, well, we don't like that decision, we're gonna do something else. I'm just curious if that was in the agreement, because that's what twenty-one and twenty-two does, puts everybody together.
So I'm not sure how to answer that a hundred percent, I can say that when this came about and the, um, proposal or whatever it was that was sent over to our unions was given to us, we went through those and made some changes, and which then went back to the mayor, and that was the end of it. Um, I I believe those changes were reasonable, as we've had in the past. Uh, however, we also knew that there we needed to be some, there needed to be some flexibility in that language. So I think if give, I think if given the chance, all of, and all of us can be very reasonable in in dealing with this, but do, would we hold this whole thing up? No, would we, would we do that, and I can tell you, on behalf of the Police Officers Union, we would not hold it up, uh, so much so that we would get tossed out of the trust, we want to stay in the trust. That's, that's the bottom line.
Any counselors for Alan? Mr. Peake.
Could you, I'm sorry, I'm still playing a little bit of catch-up here.
That's totally fine.
Um, could you just walk me through the current, the way that the thirty-two B committee currently works and the ways in which it differs from the, sort of, what's being proposed here?
So the thirty-two B committee, essentially, and I I think the best example to use is back when we had Altus come in and give this unbelievable proposal for for dental change. So we had Altus come in, uh, the mayor, it was at the mayor's suggestion, and they essentially showed us a proposal that was unbeatable, um, and looked great, and it was a lot of, ended up being a lot of smoke and mirrors. What we did is at thirty-two B committee, we had a very short window of time, I forget exactly how much time we had, but we looked at it, we worked on it hard, uh, and actually, uh, my my wife at the time ironically worked in the dental, in a dental office where she did billing. As soon as I took it home and I showed it to her, she immediately told me, that is not true, that is not true, that is not true. So what we did is we did a ton of research, uh, each of us had different portions of it, and we came back to the to the mayor and came back to the table, and once we sat down and explained to him and showed him, uh, our research and what we did and our diligence, and that it was gonna essentially, maybe in the first year, potentially save us money, in the future, it would have been disastrous for the city. And, you know, I can't speak for Mayor Talisnick, but I believe he was quite appreciative of the research, and that's, that's, I guess, my best example of of how we 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 work. And the same thing would happen right now if all of a sudden we needed to take a look at different healthcare providers. We've talked about different healthcare providers in the past, we've wanted, and we understand changes, we understand money savings and all that, and ultimately, what it comes down to is the trust is the best place for us to be when it comes to healthcare. That's, that's where we're at, this, the only part that we don't like about the trust is that we're trying to get this twenty-one and twenty-three put through for what I don't understand, and none of us understand, for what reason? Other than it takes the power away from us to negotiate, and it puts the power of change in very few people's hands, one or two people's hands, as opposed to hundreds of people's hands.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You you stated when you first got up that, um, a change in co-pay is technically not a plan design change?
That is, that is my understanding, and again, I refer to what Joe calls it, benefit changes, and we've had those in the past. And we've never had any issues with them, we knew they were coming, we knew they were coming a year and a half ago, and there was never gonna be an issue when it, when it comes to opening a contract and any type of collective bargaining or anything like that, it was, it was, hey, guys, if something's coming down the pipe, we'll see what we can do.
I think there's a disagreement on that, I think benefit changes and plan design are the same thing, in my view.
I'm sorry, sir?
I think benefit changes.
Yep.
Plan design, to me, involves all of these dollar issues, copays, premiums, whatever. Benefit changes are the same thing, unless they're talking about something that we don't know about with regard to how your providers, your doctors, et cetera, are going to work with you. Are those things involved, Joe? Shake your head no.
Well, again, I I think it's.
Come up, I just need to clarify this, because it's a major contention of confusion. Benefit changes versus plan design changes, what's the difference?
In my eyes, no, they're one and the same.
That's what I thought, Alan, okay.
And and the reason I I mention that is because in our collective bargaining agreements, as far as I know, we have no language in there that discusses that, or that would be a stalemate, or any type of, uh, reason we have to come back to the table and mitigate that at all. There are, there's some specific language, maybe to Blue Cross Blue Shield and some other things, but as far as I know, there is no language in our contracts that say we have to mitigate any of these benefit changes, plan design changes, whatever you want to call them.
There's some language in the teachers' contract, though, does have mitigation, the twenty thousand dollars. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I bring Jason up?
Yes, sir.
Because I have a question for him.
Yes, sir.
Do you mind coming up now, Jason?
Sure.
You mentioned that in a long time.
My name is Jason Dunham.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
East Hampton Firefighters Association Representative, and I live in West Hampton. I just want to, I just want to.
Uh, that's good, that's important. You mentioned in the last meeting that over all the years, this is the first time we've had major plan design changes. Now Alan just said we've had benefit or planned, can you, could you clarify that?
So for me, or the way that I understand it, a plan, a plan design would be something like, uh, if you went to a deductible plan, and you didn't have a deductible plan, then you went to a deductible, that's a different design change. If you increase your copays, it it's an increased copay, and and like we said, we, like Alan said, and and how I feel.
We've had those.
We've had increased copayments in medications.
Over the years?
Yeah, over the years.
Okay.
And and so this, as far as a plan design, I don't necessarily consider this, this isn't a plan design change, this is an increase in copays.
So given that we're in the Hampshire Trust, and we have to live with sixty-nine communities deciding this, and you heard tonight that it was decided, even though our city, Melissa, decided to vote no, it's still there.
Yes.
Over the years, what is the I, I'm gonna call it the IAC, is that appropriate insurance advisory committee?
Yes.
What do you do when you see these copays, you talk to them, to the mayor, and you find out ways of mitigation?
No.
I mean, you can't change the Hampshire Trust design, right?
I'll, I'll, for, for, I'll expand a little bit. So Hampshire County Trust, Joe Shea, you know, he's, he looks, he talks to Blue Cross, they say, hey, you guys had a lot of claims, you know, you're five percent, you know, uh, usage more than in previous years. So Joe looks at it, and he says, well, I can go to, you know, increase the, you know, copayments, I could do, you know, a design change, I could maybe increase the premiums, or I could see what we're making in our, in our, in our funds, you know? So he he comes up with a plan, there's a nine-member committee, that's the executive board for the trust, he presents it to them, they discuss it, the, any type of negotiation or advocacy goes on there. And you're right, Melissa sits on that board, we have a seat of one of those nine members. And the initial proposal that just came, uh, had come up was was a lot more, was a lot more drastic than what actually came in, and it was only because Melissa advocated, hey, listen, this this is a little extreme, let's see if we can do something else, but she's only one voice, and she's only eleven percent, ten and a half percent, right? And and there's other key players, which is South Hadley and Belchertown, and she advocated with those people and and on that board, that nine-member board, and they reduced those increased, uh, copayments, and then it's presented to everybody, just as, you know, it's, you know, so so that's how it works. The only negotiation that goes on, though, or is is between the city and the trust, i- is right there at that table. Nobody else negotiates, we, the insurance advisory board, John Lewis would come to us, or Joe's come to us, and said, listen, what about going to a deductible plan? And we talked it out, and we're like, man, that that'd be really hard on a lot of our, our members and stuff like that, and so he said, well, then we might have to increase some of the copayments. If you don't want a deductible plan, then, and and we just discussed it in an, in an open, you know, in an open meeting, but we don't, there's no bargaining. I don't, I I feel that, I think that some, there's been some misinterpretation, or or maybe, you know, misunderstanding with that. Unions don't bargain, we don't, we don't bargain with the plan design, no. Whatever, whatever the trust chooses, that's what we have. We may advocate we want more things, or we want to increase, uh, you know, um, our copayments instead of going to a deductible plan, but that that's where it begins and ends, there's no, we we can't stop it. That's our health insurance, that's what the city provides for us, and we can't balk at it, we can't not accept it. That's, that's what we're handed.
I think what the mayor's concerned about, and she'll probably come up and correct me if I'm wrong later, that seven bargaining units might come in separately for mitigation, all right, it costs our employees this much more in healthcare, can we get an extra twenty thousand or whatever for that? But what, here's, I'm gonna ask you, if there's an agreement like you had before that would put the onus on the IAC to come up with some kind of a mitigation, I don't know what it would be, between the IAC and the mayor, to try to alleviate seven different, and I think it's very important to understand, labor attorneys make a lot of money, if we're gonna have seven different bargaining units coming to the, she's concerned about that. You may say it won't happen, but it's still possible. So what I want to know is, what if the IAC had that power in some kind of a contractual agreement like you did before? And as far as I'm concerned, this contract you have, you sent us, thank you very much, by the way, nineteen ninety-nine, looks like a contract, and it's in force, I believe we did approve thirty-two B, nine A, and nine D back then, so it's a legal document. So if you have an agreement, and it's a document, contract law, I mean, that's what this is, I don't know, I'm asking.
No, it absolutely isn't, it's stated full force and effect, just as it's stated right there, and that's why our retirees get the fifty-fifty.
Right, but I'm saying, still in force today, and you're saying it's a legal document, so I.
It's a, it's a contract.
I'd rather hear that from a lawyer, I mean, I think it's an agreement, I'm not so sure it's a legal document.
So it says right in there, so it does say right in there that it's a contract, and it stays in full force and effect, and it was signed. You got a copy of it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we get, if we do something like that in the future, I don't know if we will. If we get, if we do something like that in the future, I don't know if we will. It has to be something that's vetted by our city attorney and by your attorneys, et cetera, so that it's in force. I was just curious, because it seems to be, what I'm hearing all the time here is that we want one group, you have a group. And in your group, you have pay plan employees, uh, represented, you have retirees represented and all the unions represented in the IAC, am I correct? Is that true? There's a pay plan representative?
There is a representative from, I believe every Not right now.
But you could.
Melissa or the personnel director was sitting in on it.
But in any case, that's what I'm getting at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You have more to say, it's okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I did talk to, uh, Mike Sullivan, as he requested at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, um, had a lengthy discussion with him. And one of the biggest things that he said
Would you tell everybody in the room who Mike Sullivan is?
Uh, he's a, uh, town administrator for South Hadley, so
Cause I asked you to look into why South Hadley and Belchertown adopted twenty-one and twenty-two.
That's correct.
All right, just to update everybody why we're
Sorry, I apologize. Um, so anyways, Mike Sullivan said he had no, he doesn't have a mechanism. They don't have a current insurance advisory board. And when these changes and stuff come through, there's no way to facilitate them, there's no way to talk about them. And he doesn't wanna have to go to every individual union. Unlike East Hampton, who has had the insurance advisory board for thirty years.
Okay.
Um, so that was his reasoning. Um, I also did confirm with my attorney, as we know how expensive those are. But, so last week they said that they could just, they could pull us out of the trust right now if they wanted to. But they can't. Because we can file unfair labor practice, and we can file grievances, and we can go to arbitration.
Just to correct you, Melissa said she could pull it out as long as she maintained Blue Cross and Blue Shield, which is in your document.
The process to leave the trust doesn't change either way.
Okay, thank you.
So per our attorney,
Mm-hmm.
It absolutely one hundred percent changes when you adopt twenty-one and twenty-two.
We obviously have a disagreement.
Well
You think?
I can tell you
Okay.
There's, there's been things here that I absolutely don't agree with, but the, I use Terry Coles for Pyle Roman Lichten, he's a Boston attorney, or their office is out of Boston, he has a satellite office.
Attorney for the firemen?
Yes, he's our labor attorney. And he said absolutely. And actually, when the mayor, uh, Michael Tosnick unilaterally ripped us out of our dental plan and canceled it for us, we filed an unfair labor practice and an immediate cease and desist order, which prevented him from doing so. And then, the point, it is such a great point, he wanted to take and, and move us to a different dental plan.
That Alan was talking about.
And we took sixty days, I believe it was, it was two months, to find out the loopholes and all the stuff that, cause it was too good to be true and we found out why it was too good to be true and how it was too good to be true. If you adopt twenty-one and twenty-two, you get thirty days and that's it. And if you don't agree, the city can implement it. So that was one of the biggest things. It's thirty days, it's not long enough to make an informed decision, it's not long enough for the unions to get involved, to, to find out and do the research. This insurance advisory board is not like any other. We're very active, most towns don't have them, we do a lot of work to keep us right on track. So with the adoption, that is our, that is our biggest thing. There's no, there's no cost savings. You know, people, the, the mayor had said that our unions, she's gonna have to bargain with everybody. Well, I gave you two contracts, they are legal, you can check with city, the city's attorney if you'd like, that's a legal document, it's signed by the, was signed by the current mayor and all the union heads, and it's still in full force and effect today. And that's why the retirees don't get the fifty-fifty that we agreed upon for the five percent. So when we talk about bargaining and being fair and across the board, the teacher, we, I don't know any union that can actually make any kind of claim or file a grievance over the increased co-pays. The language in there, it's not in the police, it's not in the fire, it's actually not in the teachers. The school board said to the teacher, when the teachers were negotiating, they said, listen, we can't, we don't have any money. We have to give you a zero. Fire department got one and a half percent that year. Teachers, zero. So the teacher said, fine. And a way to work with you, if we go to a deductible plan, you guys pay the first two thousand dollars out of the deductible plan and we'll, we'll take a zero. Or twenty thousand, I'm sorry. So, but do you see, I mean, in, so it saves the city a ton of money for something that wasn't even in effect right now. But these copayment increases don't contradict their contract at all. So for someone to stand up here and say, it's gonna cost numerous amounts of dollars in time to negotiate contracts is all false. And if you were concerned about it, you could go to the insurance advisory board and not send one proposal and say, I don't need to negotiate with you guys, I'm just gonna get the city council to adopt twenty-one and twenty-two. And if it didn't take away our collective bargaining rights, then why would they be doing it in the first place? I think you guys, you need to ask yourselves these questions. Cause this is a huge, this is a lot more. And down the road, somebody can rip us right out of the trust or put us wherever we wanna go to, and, and they could go to a plan with a two thousand dollar deductible. That's one of the most extreme plans out there, but they could, and it would save a boatload of money for the city. And there would be nothing we could do about it. We're here to protect our families.
Does that include your statement?
Yes, it does.
Do we have questions, Counselor McCoy?
Yeah, I get all these boards mixed up, Jason, so is the Chapter Thirty-two B Committee and the Insurance Advisor, is that the same?
That is the same thing.
And there is, I think you alluded to, there is someone from Pay Plan, a representative from Pay Plan.
Well, we used to have, the Personnel Director was sitting on there, is part of, I think she's part of the Pay Plan, was.
Come up, Monica, go ahead.
Um, so as the Personnel Director, I was on the Thirty-two B Committee, but I did not represent Pay Plan. Pay Plan was represented by Joe Pipinski.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, the, so we were talking, you're talking a lot about the negotiations for dental. As I understand it, because we're talking about the Hampshire Trust, which doesn't offer dental, this would not, adopting twenty-one, twenty-two would not affect at all the process for negotiating dental, is that a correct statement?
Nope, it was just an example of another insurance that's provided by the town and how the, um, the, the, uh, previous mayor tried to
How the IAC worked.
And, and how we had the mechanisms to stop him from making such a drastic change that would eventually just cost the city a lot of money.
Right, okay.
And then, um, cause then you said that, and then the, the city could just do, could just do this or, you know, adopt this. I mean, my understanding is that there is still this collective bargaining group or like all seven representatives look together and you guys would negotiate, and then if, what you think the best plan for your, your collective bargaining units, and if you could not come into agreement with the city, then there is a mitig, you know, another committee that makes the final ruling. So it's not like the city gets to just adopt it, isn't there another step they have to
You get thirty days and then it goes to a three-person, one is from the state,
State board.
One from the city and one from the unions. It's a lot different. And like I said, this plan and this, these laws were made up for those cities that were at a, a huge impasse and they were at a, in a huge financial crisis, um, for these things. This is, it's nothing, it's not.
Anybody else? Tom, of course, whatever you want.
All right.
So, um, so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand you correctly. The, the big thing, you already are on board with the notion of the various bargaining units working together to figure out the mitigation and all of that stuff.
We've done it for thirty years.
And you've done that together. What bothers you about this is that you don't think that thirty days is long enough to negotiate? And the, from the, the sounds of what you said at the last meeting, you didn't have a ton of faith in the, the arbitration process, you said, did you say something like that? I just wanna make sure I understand all the sides here.
Yeah, so the, yes, with, when you adopt, with twenty-one and twenty-two adoption, yes, the process, it's thirty days. Then it goes, it will go to, uh, the three-person panel if you're at an impasse. And then it gets implemented from that point.
And you, what, like, okay. Um, and that panel, it's, you said it's made of one person from the state, one person from the city and one person from, from the unions. I'm sorry, what?
Person from the state is appointed by the administration, Secretary of Administration and Finance.
Oh, okay, cool. Um, all right, great, thank you.
Anybody else, Omar, Bob, Bill?
The Advisory Committee, the Thirty-two B, um, how, how often does that committee meet? Is it, is like an as-is thing? You know, have you guys been meeting recently and, and obviously talking about this stuff? But prior to this coming to the table, is it like a once-a-month committee?
It's, it's usually, you know, it is, it's right around near, the insurance changes come out, we'll meet probably, I mean, I, I say on an average, four times a year, maybe quarterly. And just to kinda touch base, and if there's an issue, we'll, we'll meet every two weeks if we have to, you know, till we, you know, figure everything out.
Yeah.
Anything else for Jason?
I have one really quick follow-up, so, uh, so as I understand it, again, the plan is presented. This is what they voted on, this is it, so there's not, as you said, you don't really change the plan.
No bargaining, we don't bargain.
What else, you say thirty days isn't enough? If you can't change anything in the plan, cause this is, this is what the Hampshire Trust is offering, we're a member of it, what else, what else would you negotiate during that thirty days?
So, right now, like, so, I mean, I go back to like, if they wanted to maybe pull us out, if they wanted to change the dental like they did before?
But that's not part of the Hampshire Trust.
The thirty days, he's talking about if we adopt twenty-one and twenty-two?
It's the mitigation. You, you're negotiating over
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, but, but please, address it when you come up, but, um, yeah, cause I, I mean, to me, I'm trying to think, those thirty days, what are you negotiating? If the plan is, this is a plan from the Hampshire Trust, this is what we're offering.
Well, and, and you're, so you're right, no, no, you're, you're right. And, and that's the thing, is that we're in such a unique spot, which, you know, where, because we're part of the Hampshire County Trust, the, the city can advocate, but they can't negotiate with the trust. And the unions can't negotiate with the trust.
Right.
So whatever the plan is, the plan is. And that's part of the, this is not necessary, part of it, not just the thirty days, but the fact that nobody can negotiate with the plan design. The city can't change any of it and neither can the unions. It's part of, if we agree to be in the trust, we're all, the city and all the unions, we're like, yeah, obviously, this is the best plan.
But that's, that's completely independent of twenty-one and twenty-two, right? I mean, that's just the way it is whether you're, you have twenty-one, twenty-two.
Whether you're in or out.
So what I'm still trying to get at is, since we can't change the plan, this is what we get. What are you negotiating? Are you negotiating, okay, the co-pays went up, so we want one point seven percent? I mean, what, what do you feel you don't have, thirty days isn't enough time to negotiate with this? What I don't understand.
I think the confusion, Joe, is between twenty-one and twenty-two, if we adopt that, that's where thirty days come into play. But if we don't adopt it, we have until July first, because they have to do it, to, to agree to the plan that's there, the city does. And in the meantime, you can negotiate things. But if you adopt twenty-one and twenty-two, if the city adopts that, the mitigation from savings for the first year is what this new committee, the twenty-one and twenty-two, have thirty days to do. In other words, the twenty-five percent that you can, they get, how it's distributed, how it's gonna be used, that's what's done in that thirty days. But the thirty days relates to if we adopt twenty-one and twenty-two.
Right, yeah, I know that, I'm just wondering, it's like, cause if you can't change the plan, what is so cumbersome, cumbersome to fit into that thirty-eight time plan?
The, the thing is, is that it's not, it's not twenty, it's not, that's, it's just part of it. When you adopt a twenty-one and twenty-two, it's, it's the, it's the power that it will allow any administrator, this mayor, the next one, the next one down the road, to do. That's where, that is our concern, that is what we're trying to prevent. It's not, right now, we're in the trust. There's a, a lot of stability within the trust, even with increasing copayments or whatever it is. Like I said, we can't negotiate it, whatever it is, it is. But it's down the road, cause it's gonna give someone, if it's not this mayor or somebody else, a different mayor, to say, you know what, I don't even, I don't wanna be in the trust, I'm gonna put you here. So that's why we don't want this stuff adopted, because it gives them too much power and it doesn't give us a way or an avenue, we can't file unfair labor practice, we can't file grievances, we can't go to arbitration once these laws are adopted. Cause it says, once the laws are adopted in here, they can make those changes on their own. And it
Okay.
Yeah.
We've heard it. Anything else? No. I'd like to bring up now. You have a statement, I assume?
Good evening.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, who you are, where you live.
That's right. Um, I'm Nellie Taylor, I'm the President of the East Hampton Education Association, I live in Florence.
And you're a teacher in our system?
I teach at East Hampton High School, I've been there for ten years.
Thank you.
I teach math. Um, so, uh, I think one of the glaring omissions from the conversation at this point is that, um, we have a functioning, um, insurance advisory board in the city. It's not, um, it, it's, you know, without twenty-one and twenty-two, the, you know, the mayor and the Personnel Director are saying that there's no way to get all of the groups to the table at the same time to make an agreement together. And that's not true. There, there is a third path that's not being discussed. And, um, that path is actually referred to in Sections twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, and it's, uh, section nineteen of the law actually outlines the, the board, the collective board, that's called a PAC, that makes the, uh, all of the labor unions come to the table to make an agreement with the city. So twenty-one, twenty-two reference Section nineteen, where the PAC is outlined.
Do we have to adopt nineteen?
Yes.
We would have to adopt nineteen?
Yes, and I'm arguing that you can adopt nineteen and form this group without adopting twenty-one and twenty-two.
That's new information, thank you.
You're welcome. And
I gotta look into that.
So, um, I, again, the reason why twenty-one and twenty-two are so problematic for, for the labor union side is that there are going to be out-of-pocket expenditures, increased out-of-pocket expenditures in perpetuity after the trust makes plan design changes. We, we are going to have increased co-pays, increased dollar figures for hospital stays, increased dollar, uh, like, uh, dollar amounts for imaging, um, many tests and, um, inpatient and outpatient hospital costs, as well as ER visits, are all going to be increased costs for us now. Some of them are going up from zero to a hundred dollars or more. That's a significant cost for people who have an unexpected illness, who have not had to incur that cost in the past. These are functional pay cuts for us as employees. And I think it's important that you understand how important the mitigation of that in an ongoing way is to the employees of the city. It's not, twenty-one and twenty-two significantly limit the ability to mitigate those, those out-of-pocket expenditures in any way after year one. And during year one, we only get access to twenty-five percent of the savings that the city incurs from the plan design changes. Um, and so it is, um, and so those costs are going up forever. In addition, this year we don't have a premium increase because the entire cost increase, the five-ish percent of, uh, increased cost of the plan is being shifted directly onto employees. One hundred percent out of employee pockets. In future years, we're going to be dealing with that still and the premium is going to increase as well. Because health insurance is never going to become less expensive. So these issues are being compounded. It's going to be out-of-pocket expenditures plus premium increases that we are, you know, we split them twenty-five, seventy-five with the city. So I cannot get behind a law that limits our access to mitigating those costs. Because it is going to hurt employees of the city who ha, who use health insurance. Particular, and it, and it's going to be, um, in, it's, I wanna call up Paul DiMarco to talk about how that's going to hurt employees in the city at different pay grades, um, because I think it's important for you to kind of have an eye toward that. Um, Paul has crunched some numbers. Paul has crunched some numbers for you and has a handout.
I'll take a handout, but I'd rather talk to you right now. Do I have, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you, I heard something tonight from Jason, I want to confirm. When you negotiated your last contract, the school committee said we can't afford, or the superintendent, who are you negotiating with? The superintendent or the school committee or both?
We negotiate with the school committee, the superintendent sits in on those as well.
So they said, we can't afford to give you an increase, we have to go zero?
There, in the past, there was a zero year, and.
Was the year that you got the twenty thousand dollar language in the side agreement, I read, was that the year that you got a zero?
There were two zero years, I'm hearing, and I'm hearing confirmation from my vice president Kathy Dunham.
You got the twenty thousand to help mitigate the cost of healthcare increases because you.
If the plan changed. We have never had access to that money, that money has never been distributed.
If the plan changed.
If the plan changed, in particular ways.
So now you'd get it, because the plan's changed, because your contract's enforced.
I'm not sure, because it's for a deductible plan, isn't it? So we're not, we're not, it's, it's irrelevant, because the, we're not going to a plan with a deductible.
I didn't read it clearly, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, but that, in that year, when you had a zero increase in salary, you put that in, and now you're telling me only if the deductible plan came?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's more advantageous for my union to come to the table and negotiate with the other unions, something that works for all of us. Because, again, as I said in my last, in my comments last week, the twenty thousand dollars spread over three hundred members-ish is not a lot of money.
But what you just said, the twenty thousand dollars isn't even coming into the play, because these plan design changes don't include a medical deductible.
That's right.
It does include a prescription deductible, so it might come into play.
This is what I'm hearing from my field rep.
Well, and I don't, I don't know your language in your contract by heart, but regardless of that, if, I said this, I asked this of the other two members of the union, if the I A B, Insurance Advisory Board, had reached, reaches an agreement, if we don't do twenty-one and twenty-two, with the mayor's office, that puts mitigation into your hands, would you be willing to not? I don't know if that voids that language legally, how that would work, but that, to me, would have to be a legal document, that the attorneys agree is legal, that puts all mitigation in one place, and just like, well, maybe twenty-one and twenty-two does, but in this case, with your whole committee, helping all the employees, and negotiating with the mayor, but then, it would, to me, it would have to have language that would probably need to prevent an individual bargaining unit from going back to the table, because they didn't agree with the group. What do you think of that? I mean, you got to come up with language of something like that, if you're, if you're not going to do twenty-one and twenty-two. Seems to me, I'm getting ahead of myself, but that seems to me, something's got to be done.
Sure, and so, so I brought to you the option of Section nineteen.
Right, I got to look into that.
And, and I also would say that I would absolutely entertain looking, looking at the differences between the language. I mean, the, it seems like, since we've never had access to the twenty thousand dollars from any changes in the past, anything moving forward that does create a mitigation of costs that is accessible to my members is going to be advantageous.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for now?
So, Nellie, maybe you can answer the question for me, what I asked Jason. So, again, plan is, this is the plan, that, that thirty days, then, that would be the time period that would, you would say, okay, this is looking actually a functional pay cut for us, we would like X, Y, and Z, is that what would happen in those thirty days? I'm trying to figure out.
So in the thirty days, we would come to the table together, as a collective body of labor, with the mayor's office and the, the personnel department, and figure out, how are we going to spend some of the savings? And how is that going to be dispersed to municipal employees over years where that savings is incurred, because we have out-of-pocket costs? So it would be like creating an HSA or an HRA, and like, what are the terms of that, and, and what would it cover?
And you would be doing that as part of a group of all the unions, or would you be doing that for the teachers' union?
I mean, I, I think it's more advantageous for the city to have us all coming together. I don't think twenty-one and twenty-two is the vehicle to make that happen.
But, but it kind of, it forces it to happen, doesn't it? Because it doesn't create.
Twenty-one and twenty-two forces it to happen, it, but it also, like, it does it in such a harshly streamlined way, where there's, there's no room for extremely thoughtful conversation. I mean, health insurance is so complex. It's, I mean, it's hard for people who have been studying it for a long time to understand how the changes impact employees, and what, and so the negotiation around how to disperse savings could absolutely take more than thirty days. And, and I think it's pertinent to the city to have that time in order to create a fair agreement for the employees.
Do you see how it could be problematic if teachers wanted this benefit, and DPW wanted this benefit, and the city had to go this, this meeting, and then pay labor for this? I mean, you can understand the appeal, not, not come from a union-busting perspective, but from a finance perspective, we're in a time where we could streamline this process, maybe streamline some more, but, but, you know, instead of individually negotiating with every single union and incurring a cost for every single mitigation, let's be preemptive and have, let's work together as a group initially to come up with a plan. I think that, that's how I understand what the, what the city is looking for, from the perspective of it.
Sure, we already do that, and there's another vehicle to do that in a, a legal way that's related to Chapter thirty-two.
Section nineteen.
So I think that confuses me, everyone here sounds like, oh, yeah, we all, we all get along, but then why are we here? I mean, is there, is there.
We're here because we don't want twenty-one and twenty-two to pass.
But is there, but.
Because, because this removes our, it shortens the timeline, and it only gives, the twenty-one and twenty-two only give us access to mitigation during year one. Joe, Joe Shea said tonight, that there's probably not going to be another plan design change for three to four years. That means in years two, three, and four, we get nothing, and we still have out-of-pocket expenditures, and the premiums go up, and our pay cut gets significantly compounded.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Tom?
Technical point. You say that you guys are negotiating with the Insurance Advisory Board, but you also say that you negotiate with the school committee, or you're negotiating your wages and whatnot with the school committee, but then health insurance, you do not with them, you do with the.
Yes, so we have a one-fifty E collective bargaining contractual process that happens every three-ish years with the school committee and the superintendent, because they are the employer of the teachers.
Right.
As teachers, custodians, you know, admin assistants, nurses.
Sure.
All of us. And, and paraeducators, who are some of our most valuable employees, by the way. So, that contractual bargaining doesn't include health insurance, or it hasn't in the past, except for this side letter that we have, because it was a compromise when we took zeros.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
Just skimming through the contract, your agreement here, sixteen point two, the school committee shall provide employees the same health insurance plan and coverage offered to city bargaining units. That means that your plan has to be the same as the firefighters and the police. Is that verbiage also in, in everybody else's? So this kind of already would put everything as one, right? And, and collective bargaining together?
That has to be in everybody's contract, I don't know.
Well, I know it's in the schools, so how can you have separate contracts?
I can't speak to the other contracts.
So, but, but your contract would have to be the same, so if police and fire are two separate agreements, then.
We're in the trust, we like the trust, we want to stay in the trust, no one's arguing anything should change about that. And, and our contract says that whatever the police and fire and other labor unions have, we will also have, that's what, you know.
Kind of like, no, I don't think I have any more on that.
Omar, anything? You wanted to say something?
I sure do.
But I want it to be brief, okay? I'll say why. This is East Hampton, and I'd like to, certainly you're right to speak, but I would like to keep it to the East Hampton people to have the priority in speaking this evening. So you can hand out what you're going to hand out and give us a brief description. Can you hand one of these out to the mayor and to the other? Here, Omar. I'll give this also to the mayor. I'm giving you one right now.
Hi. So my name's Paul DiMarco, I work for the Massachusetts Teachers Association, I live in Shute'sbury. I'm not an attorney, I don't practice law in Massachusetts, but I have negotiated a Section twenty-three agreement previously, and actually got pretty close to finishing a couple of twenty-one agreements last time, when the trust decided not to implement the changes. So I do have some information about this. First thing I'd like to point out, and I, most important thing I'd like to point out, is the Massachusetts Teachers Association never endorsed Sections twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three. I did not work for the MTA in two thousand and eleven, I worked for the SEIU as a research director, and we were in a partnership and alliance with all the other public employee unions, and we fought these laws tooth and nail. We were there, we tried to modi, mollify or modify them a bit, but we didn't get much traction, we never supported this. Two, I'd like to point out that it may say in the contracts that all the unions, that the teachers' union gets whatever the other city employees get, but that's the law, all the employees have to get the same benefits. That's under, under thirty-two B. And any changes to those benefits is a mandatory subject of bargaining. If, if there were no hours of work in the teachers' contract, they would sell, and they wanted to change the hours, we'd say, no, you have to bargain with us. Twenty-one and twenty-two takes that away. I gave you a copy of a proposed agreement that we had proposed to the mayor, and you can see it's, it's got the Microsoft Word tracking in it. The original changes were from the mayor's proposal to us, which was basically a waiver of our rights to bargain over anything of this. What we said is, we'll give up the right to bargain over the decision to make the changes. We want to bargain over the impact of those changes. And I believe that that was presented by all the unions at the thirty-two B committee, the IAC. The difference between the IAC and a Section nineteen or a Section twenty-one committee is that once you adopt Section twenty-one or Section nineteen, it forces all the unions to come to one table and bargain as one group, with weighted voting based on their membership. Right now, they've been doing that informally and very successfully, without having that process forced on them. I also want to go over through some of these changes that are included on this document here. So if you look at the top, this is what would, this is what, the two right columns show what the city would bear and what the employees would bear if there were a five percent premium increase. Joe Shea has indicated to me, I'm not sure if you said so publicly, but it's about five percent plan design change, right?
Again, we're waiting for a recalculation, because we did adjust some of it. Last year was five point four five, so we're asking the board to recount.
But it's a ballpark figure.
Yes.
It's about five percent. So that's, that's, that's the only information I have, is what I've gotten from Joe on that. So if the premiums were to increase by five percent, these two right columns would show various plans. If you look on the left, it shows the HMO, independent HMO plus one, so the different bands recommend, reflect the different plans you're in. So the employees in HMO independent would, would see a ninety-four dollar, ninety-five dollar increase. The city would bear two hundred and eighty-four dollars of that, because it's a seventy-five twenty-five split between the two. Now, if you look at the bottom column, this is when plan designs, or with plan designs that are, that have been approved by the trust now, are implemented, you would see that there would be a five percent cost shift, that first column, five percent cost shift in the bottom, represents the total value of that cost. This is average, you got to understand, because no single employee is going to exactly do what an average, well, there'll probably be one, but you can't predict exactly what somebody's healthcare experience is going to be next year. Some people may go to the doctor more often, some people may go less, some people may have more prescriptions, some people may have less. This is an average cost shifted onto the employees. The first-year mitigation fund under Section twenty-one, twenty-two would provide twenty-one percent, twenty-five percent would be provided to the employees in one shape or another. Again, these are average numbers. So the value of the cost shift to the employees is two hundred and eighty-four dollars in that first column. If you're in each HMO independent, I'm not going to go through all the numbers. The cost shifted to employees in year two, because there is no mitigation fund, is now worth three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So the difference between that is an additional two hundred and eighty-four to ninety-seven. And this says year two, and it has a little infinity sign, that's because that goes on forever, that's an increased cost, unless the price, cost of healthcare come down, which I think is pretty unlikely, we're going to see that cost forever borne by the employees. And just to give you a, a perspective on what this would, how this would affect some of our members, down at the bottom is our paraprof, our hourly workers, so this would be about a four percent cost shift to the average paraprofessional, a two point two percent cost shift to administrative assistants, a two percent cost shift to a custodian. Whereas you look all the way on the right on that bottom column, that's what it would cost them if it was just premium increases. So also, I want to correct the record on something. It was said that they couldn't tell you what the ballpark estimate was for the savings of the city, unless they started the process, because it would just magically create this. That's if they provide us with a written notice that's very prescribed under the law, that starts the process. They could give you a very ballpark, or they could give you almost an exact number, as long as they don't give us the written notice, that starts the process for negotiations.
You mean under twenty-one and twenty-two?
Yes, they have to provide us, they send us a certified letter saying this is, these are these various pieces of information. If you look, I handed you one more document, says in the front, eight oh one C M R. These are the regulations behind, I think, I'm sorry, councilor, I forgot your name.
Yeah, I think I got one, did you guys?
Sorry, I only handed out one. I brought one, because I brought it with me for reference.
Is there only one?
But you might like to get copies of it.
There's only one of those?
I'm sorry, I just brought it with myself for reference, but thought, after I was listening to you, that you might like to have a copy. Those are the regulations which govern how twenty-one and twenty-two are implemented. You can see the numbers, eight oh one C M R fifty-four, I believe? So I can get you more copies. Also, I have copies of Section nineteen in the car, which I'll bring, I'll go down and get.
I have it right here.
Oh, okay. Got you. So Section nineteen was something the MTA supported, unlike twenty-one and twenty-two, because it, we understood that employers had to go to different unions and bargain different, and it was impossible to ever get any changes done. So Section nineteen allowed them, you, I'm sure the city council would, who would vote for this or pass this if you did adopt it.
I have to read it to it.
Yep. Would allow you to say, unions, you have to all come to one table. I'm not saying you should adopt it, there is another path that would give you the coverage that you're looking for. Right now, the city, because the trust has adopted the plan design changes and voted, and the city was there, the city has already opened up its liability to us under you unfair labor practice. We offered to waive that liability in the, in our proposal, it was rejected, because they have a collective bargaining obligation to us, let me explain that, to negotiate with us over plan design changes. If they're taking part in a plan, in a, a process to change our plan design without negotiating with us, they violated the collective bargaining obligation. We're not interested in pursuing that, as everybody here has said, the plan design has changed. East Hampton doesn't have, does not have a say in that, it has a say, but doesn't decide on how that gets done. We understand that, we'd like to bargain as equals, because that's what one-fifty gives us, suppose the Section twenty-one or twenty-two. We get to bargain as equals with the city over how the, how the impact of those plan design changes happen. So that's it, sorry, we go so long.
A quick one for you, just, I'm, I'm new to nineteen. Nineteen creates this board of a collect, you know, a committee of all the different collective bargaining agreements. So what, how does it differ from just nineteen alone, from twenty and twenty-one? Does it, is there not the thirty-day time period or what?
There is no thirty day. Yeah, so either one, twenty-one or, twenty-one, twenty-two, or Section nineteen converts your IAC into a PAC. It's called a Public Employee Committee, right now it's an advisory committee. And they would have, and then the unions have to vote, would bargain together. I'm not advocating for that, I'm saying it is another option that would allow legal, the city legal coverage if it wanted to do these changes and bargain with us, and not worry about one union saying no. But all the unions came together, I believe, and back to that counterproposal we made to the city to begin with, that we'll waive our, our right to bargain over the decision to make the changes. That is, the change, the plan design changes are adopted by the trust, but we want to bargain over the impact. In other words, what the mitigation is and how that looks.
Although technically, East Hampton voted no, right?
Doesn't matter. There's a case out there called, there's a case out there called Plymouth, which we brought up to the serve, actually, and won. And Provincetown voted no at their trust, and Provincetown was still found to have violated their collective bargaining obligation to the union.
Okay, that's a mic question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else, it's getting late.
Can I just put on record what our, okay. So I have a, I do have a copy of our contract, current language for insurance, I just want to put it on record. to put it on record. Article six under insurance says, "The city will continue to offer healthcare insurance programs and will contribute to the cost of said programs prescribed by chapter 32B of the Massachusetts General Laws as negotiated by and with the Insurance Advisory Committee." So that, so again, that just shows that there is no, we don't have to go back to the table based on these new changes.
Okay.
Okay. If you would like, very quickly, our article 29.01, "The employer will pay the percentage of Blue Cross and Blue Shield in benefit currently in effect for employee covered by this agreement and any increased benefits as may here and after be adopted." None of our contracts are violated. It was a, she may have misspoke. There's no bargaining or anything. None of our contracts are violated with these pay, with these increases.
Stay, stay at, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, Jason.
None of them.
Melissa, do you have anybody else? Because I'd like to give a rebuttal time to Melissa and to Joe. Okay, who wants to go first?
Well, I just want to say, Mr. DiMarco did prove the point, like he said, because there are design changes and that hasn't been impact bargain, we're in violation. That was the point, like, under 150E, that's the problem, and that's why we're looking for a path forward. No one wants to leave the trust, however, it is a change in their benefit.
And under 150E.
And it is a change in their benefit, it's a change in their gross compensation, and every bargain, current, under current, under the current rules, every bargaining unit has a right to ask for mitigation to that change.
Regardless of what's in their contracts, that's their right by law, is what you're saying, correct?
Yes, under 150E, which is the same rule that you have, that you would, you would have to go through to remove the provider.
If you want to change a plan.
Right, because it's a change. It's a change to their overall contract and benefit plan, and each individual group has rights under 150E.
Okay. Do you want to say something, Joe?
Just to clarify a few things that, that was brought up by a couple of the other speakers. One, the trust doesn't kick anybody out of the, the trust, but the only way you would get kicked out of the trust is if you didn't pay your premium. Your claim experience can be horrible, terrible, and I think the last time we did East Hampton's claim experience run, it wasn't very good. Once you get into the trust, you stay in the trust, it's up to you to leave the trust. Again, it's, it's, the hard thing is to actually get into the trust. We were very picky about who we let in, but once you're let in, you're not kicked out. So again, nobody's looking, the trust is not looking to kick you out. They mentioned, the trust was really advocating for 21, 22. As I mentioned, I think, in one of the earlier meetings, that was just based on, on legal counsel, talking with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, a number of attorneys, along with some other insurance providers. They all had indicated that 21 and 22 was the way to, to implement the changes, and seeing this was the first time that we've been looking at benefit changes, we were basically advocating, taking that route. And again, the trust, again, is just advocating that, we're not pushing it, and again, it's, you know, it's being discussed here. And in regards to plan changes, I've been in this role for about seven years, we've never had a plan change. Last, I've been told that there was a plan change within the trust was back in 2000. There was some reference to some plan changes or copayments that have been changed recently. Again, I've been in this role seven years, there's never been one. Few of my employees have been here for about 12, in the 12-year range, they never have seen a copayment change or any kind of benefit change. So the last, we knew that there was a $5 copay change back in 2000. So this is the first, this is new for us as well. There was mention about arbitrary changes by the trust. There's really not arbitrary changes by the trust, where I don't go into a meeting and demand a, a change. I report into a nine-member executive committee, and that reports up into the Insurance Advisory Committee. So again, I had mentioned at one of the other meetings, there are 69 groups that make up the trust, they're the ones that finally determine what the benefits are and what the, the premium changes are. Alan mentioned earlier, and I just wanted to clarify, just, he had mentioned that there was a pharmaceutical error. There, there really wasn't a pharmaceutical error. What we ended up doing last year was negotiating better rates with the pharmacy benefit manager that we utilize through Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Over the last five years, we've made a number of changes to the good for the trust, where about five years ago, we changed our MedX plan. We tweaked who was paying for the pharmas- pharmaceutical expenses. Right now, the federal government does, we pay the federal government a premium, and again, that's worked out well because it allowed us to reduce our rates by about 20% five years ago. And again, pharmaceutical expenses drive what the MedX rate is, and it's basically allowed us to shift the cost of, you know, the unpredictable cost of pharmaceuticals to the federal government for the MedX employees. We also implemented about four years ago a Canna RX plan, which allows people that are on long-term maintenance drugs, that tier three, the more expensive ones, to use a Canna RX program at no cost to them, the 100% of the cost is borne by the, the trust. So again, going back to the, the pharmaceutical error, last year, or actually it was June of 17, we engaged a consultant to go back to our pharmacy benefit manager and try to negotiate better rates on, on what we were paying, what our subscribers were paying for pharmaceuticals. There was about a seven-month negotiation process between Blue Cross, Blue Shield and our pharmacy benefit manager, and what we ended up with was a three-year contract with the pharmacy benef- benefit manager that negotiated some better rates across tier one, tier two, tier three drugs. We've had this in place for just about a year now, and, and it is saving the trust money to, to the tune of about $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a month. We anticipate over that three-year timeframe, it's going to save the subscriber about $5.5 million. So it's something, again, that has worked and, and we probably should have done sooner, and it, it took a while for us to do that negotiation. And I guess the point of, of some of these changes that we've made in the, the last five years is the fact that the trust is, is managed very, very differently from other trusts throughout the state. You have an active managed trust in Northampton. Your insurance director, who, who, you know, was May, and then prior to that was Scott Wallace, who some of you may know, again, actively manages the trust. Most trusts outsource the, the management of the trust to a third-party vendor. We work exclusively with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, we get a lot of reporting from them, we are interacting with them on a, on a very, very regular basis. So again, we probably have a better idea of, of how our trust and what our claims look like than any other trust in, in the state of Massachusetts, just because, again, it's actively managed and onsite versus hiring a third-party vendor to do it. And then, last thing was, it was mentioned, for about the last year and a half, everybody is very fast and loose with, with what the trust's numbers look like, and it was mentioned at least twice today or tonight that the trust has $38 million. Trust does not have $38 million, and there's a difference between total assets versus your net assets. The trust currently has approximately $32 million. Of that $32 million, about 11 to 12 million of that are liabilities. So the net asset to the trust is approximately in the $20 to $21 million range, and that is our unrestricted reserve. So that is our, our, basically, I call it the piggy bank, what, what, what we have in excess of our liabilities. And that $20, $21 million is in excess of what we, we're trying to project our reserve to be. We hope that reserve to be about 17 million, so we are anywhere from $3 to $4 million over, over-reserved. And the benefit changes that will be taking place on July 1st of this year, we expect to, to actually lose money in the 2020 year. The, the changes that we proposed will not cover all of the expenses that we expect to see, and we expect to lose, and, you know, right now, it's an estimated $2 million, but again, anything can happen because we're talking about a contract that doesn't start for another five months and doesn't end for 17 months out, so.
Okay.
So again.
Thank you. Mayor? Well, you weren't here, but Melissa was up already.
My apologies for having to, to step out a couple of, of times.
You have an important role in our city.
I, I do, and that's actually one of the points I want to make right now. I am mayor of an entire city and budget, so when I hear about someone not having concern over legal fees or time, well, that's fine, that's their focus and their role, that's not my role. I wasn't elected mayor to specifically take care of 32B, but all of the employees and all of the residents of East Hampton and deliver a balanced budget. That is very difficult to do with so many variables in front of municipalities right now. And we've already gotten some, some very dangerous, not heartening news about what we may or may not get from the state and the governor's budget. I hope that that's the beginning of the process and we'll end up in a better place.
Great.
It's interesting that the speakers before, from labor and representing employees, find the same position that I do, and we agree. I'm not going to be mayor forever, just not. I mean, if nothing else, I'm not promising I will expire in office, but I'm just not going to be mayor forever. Likewise, those members, the members of our 32B committee, will not always be on the 32B committee. They will not always be employees. They change, just as our administration. The folks who are coming together and have done so for so many years, I respect them, and I, I am pleased that in 1999, there was a letter that brought everyone to, in agreement, which was written before these, this section, "I am specifically asking for the adoption of 21 and 22 to stabilize, not just this year, but going forward, healthcare costs and benefits in the best way that I can," knowing that the city council will be different, that the members of our union will be different, that our mayor will be different, our finance director at some point, and this gives some codification and a path forward to mitigate what those costs will be to the city. And if the section 19 or section 4, but, but I'm specifically asking for 21 and 22 to go forward in the best interest of all of our employees, but as well as mayor, our budget. I have no, in the last year, I have learned so many times over that in my position, it is not to make everyone happy. I also know, about a year ago, that we had these plan designs coming, and I stood with labor, and I said, "No," because they were rushed, because there was question about 21 and 22 not being properly adopted by other cities. And at that point, even on the executive committee, East Hampton voted no. I clearly understand the vein and sentiment of our city of sticking together and figuring out things on our own using such letter. Those plan design changes, that no vote a year ago, we knew there would be plan design changes this year, we had a year. There was a letter. That letter was not all agreed to by every single one of our unions, and the language that was last given to me, our labor attorney said, "If I sign that, it will be in peril of the city," and she said, "You do so against legal advice." Knowing there are plan changes, I went for the adoption of 21 and 22. If there should ever be a letter where all of our collective bargaining units could come together and that would not expose us to overdue liability or expense, sure, a letter can be on the table, but I am not doing it at the risk of opening our city to liability, some of which that liability is not the concern of the 32B committee, is not the concern of collective bargaining. I understand that. My position and responsibility is much broader, and I would just ask specifically for you to vote, to recommend, and for the full council to adopt 21 and 22. So the city has a way forward in a codified manner to address this, until, of course, we pass single payer, and then we'll all be okay.
Yeah. In my lifetime, maybe.
Yeah, keep that up. So in, in closing, those, those, that's my ask, adoption of 21, 22 for that.
Okay. I'd like to bring this meeting to the table here.
Mike.
I think you're done. Unless somebody has a really pressing question, councillors, I'd like to bring it in here. I have a proposal that I'd like to bring forward. Mayor, you don't have to, okay? I've heard a lot, some new information. I didn't know about section 19. I'm going to study that. From the teachers, I've heard that they had a zero year, that's where the $20,000 came in, and I didn't know that that wasn't even able to be used by the teachers because it had to deal with medical cop- deductibles, which you don't have. I learned from Melissa and Mr. DiMarco that if you make changes, doesn't matter what's in your contract, 150E says you can file grievances because there were changes. That's what the city's worried about. City council, in my opinion, this is my opinion, I haven't talked to anybody else here, is in a no-win situation here. Number one, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. The mayor is very persuasive, and I want you all to listen, she's very persuasive because she understands what's going to happen down the road if we don't come up with some kind of a plan to mitigate these huge healthcare costs that are going to hit the city. But we, as city councillors, have an obligation to the fiduciary responsibility of making sure our taxpayers are represented by us. That's, that's their, the mayor's side, our side, but we also have a responsibility to make sure that we have labor peace, because the services that our labor provide have to be provided where they feel appreciated and feel like they have a voice. I think if we vote yes to the mayor, we're probably obliging our own fiduciary responsibility, we're getting a lot of labor conflict from that. If we vote no, we're neglecting that responsibility. We don't win as a city council, in my opinion, in this vote, but I take it very seriously, my representation to the taxpayers, we're just increasing taxpayers' costs because we voted for a new school 20%. That's something to be considered when we look ahead. Now, we're not going to raise taxes to help pay for healthcare, but if healthcare costs go up, that money's got to come from some service that we can't do anymore, a layoff someplace. That's what's happened in the past. To me, and this is what I'm going to bring forward, the best plan is to table this, try to get the IAC and the mayor together, to get that, I've heard that there is a possibility that an agreement could be made, an agreement that the city attorney and the labor attorney and your attorneys agree is safe, but also protects the city against 150E grievances. I'd love for you to get together in the next two or three weeks and come back to us and say, "We can't get that, or we can get it." If you force a city council vote, and I'm saying this to the labor attorneys, you may think you have the votes no, because you're very persuasive, but the mayor is too. So I would rather see us stay out of 21 and 22 if we have an agreement between the city and the labor unions to try to protect the city against 150E grievances, mitigate, and provide for mitigation, flex benefit plans, whatever the city and the finance director can come up with. But if you tell us you can't reach that agreement, and I'd like to see that agreement, you know, happen quickly, because there's a timeline here. Now, obviously, you all want to stay in the Hampshire Trust, and I've heard you agree that there should be, even section 19 might be something you could do. I don't know if that's something, you have to look at it, I don't know what it is, but I really feel that, I'd like the city council, I like this committee, and I'm proposing this from this finance committee, table this for the time being, I'm taking it off the table, but I would like to see if that letter of agreement that I heard was out there that was changed and suddenly became an issue with our attorneys, putting the city in heavy liability, I don't know what that is, I'm not a lawyer. I'm hoping that an agreement can be made, that, that, the other thing about that is, we can't repeal 21 and 22 easily, but that agreement could be updated a lot easier, but it's in the city's best interest to have fiduciary safety, to have an agreement that doesn't provide an opening for grievances all the time, and it's in the employee's best interest to keep the Hampshire Trust safe. We don't want to go what happened in Amherst, because certain groups decided they weren't going to do anything, and they didn't want to do anything to help that. and they didn't want to do anything to help that. And they have actuariais, which I don't know what that means a lot, but I think it means coming forward in years ahead. They're worried about the, the, uh, the financial stability of the trust. Okay? But our responsibility is to the taxpayers, and I don't know where I'd go with this. Right now, I'm in conflict in my own head because I see both sides. So, that's what I want to do, councilors, and I'd like, I'll make a motion to that effect, but I want you to respond. I'm going to keep this at the table, and of course, Omar and Tom, you can say something, but that's what I'd like to do. Table this and see if they can come to an agreement or get together. If they can't, okay. In other words, this IAC puts all of the labor together, puts all the employees in one pot, which is something we want. We've got to protect the city against grievances that could happen because we're making plan design changes.
Joe, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's still, there's some more information that I'm digesting, and, uh, section nineteen was new to me. And, um, so I think there's certainly plenty of stuff that I could be doing independently of the collective bargaining groups and the, uh, management of the city. So, I think that sounds reasonable to me.
So, table it for a little while, what do you think, Bill?
My only thing is I don't, I haven't seen any benefit yet, dollars, or any hard evidence of where the savings is going to be, how it impacts negatively, or where it would impact us benefiting, beneficially for, for, uh, financial. You know, I, I haven't been convinced on any of that, um, you know, and I know in the budget, we, we did a four-point-seven increase to, uh, the, the health insurance benefit already in, in correspondence with these plan designs, uh, for, for the twenty-nineteen budget. So, we're already planning for it, there's already been money taken out and put aside for, for some of this so that it, uh, eases the burden, I guess, on the taxpayer. You know, I think, looking at the budget, um, as a business person, there's areas of opportunity for savings that could mitigate any increases. You know, so, I personally, um, you know, tabling it, can we do it? Is there enough time really to, to do it? I know there's, there's a ton of different, um, uh, time restraints that, that are out there. So, if we table it and everybody meets, is it going to be enough time to, to?
I think the timing on this is twenty-one and twenty-two, if I understand it correctly. If we're going to adopt that, that sets timeline in, in motion.
Correct.
And I'm not saying we're going to table this forever, give them a couple of weeks. I'd like to hear back at our next finance committee meeting, where you're at. But I am not going to negate the fact that this could pass. Maybe it won't, who knows? I'd like to keep it in the city. City of East Hampton isn't Belchertown and South Hadley. You guys have had a good committee for a lot of years. It's worked, but this is new. From what I understand, this kind of change that's happening now is new. You haven't had to deal with it before, and the city's rightfully worried that one fifty E grievances could come their way. Although people have said they don't want to go there, I would like to see that in writing, and if it can be made legal, great. But I think that's a better way to go than adopting something we may end up not liking and then finding out we can't repeal it, or something else. Maybe section nineteen is some way to go. We have a lot more to deal with. And if the councilors have questions, of the mayor shall answer them. Maybe you could, you could get Joe's email and ask him questions in the next two weeks. But that's where I'm at, I can't vote on this tonight because I don't know what I'd do. I think there's more and more possibility out there if the city's labor and the city government can get together. So, I make a motion to table this for two weeks. Do I have a second?
I'm not, I mean, I, only in the committee if it's a tie, I mean, wait.
Well, you could vote yes, what do you think? You want to vote tonight, or do you want, is it okay if we wait?
The, the tabling it is, is just my concern on the timelines that we have to do with the trusts and everything else. I mean, we need to give them an answer, I know, obviously, it's July first, but I, if, it, I, I have a feeling if somebody could else explain a timeline, I don't know if we have two and a half weeks, three weeks.
Well, I think the soonest we could have an, uh, advertised public hearing would be the second meeting in February, correct? Because you, you haven't set a public hearing yet, which will do the February sixth, so that we have, what is it, two or three weeks built in anyway before we could even vote on it, period.
Right. I'd be happy to set a public hearing at the next council meeting, meet on the thirteenth and see where we're at. Hopefully, I hear, hey, we've got an agreement. We don't have to do anything, but we don't know. So, why don't we, we don't have to take any action, we don't have to table it, we just don't take any action until the next meeting. Is that okay with you? We're just, I will set a public hearing at the next meeting. For a vote on this by the full council, so our next meeting is next week, what's that?
February sixth.
So, the thirteenth, the sixth, thirteenth is the next finance committee meeting? Tom, you have a meeting, six?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to talk to our media and see if we can move that, or move this meeting around, because it's probably going to take more than an hour.
Certainly.
Also, we might be getting something else that needs to be dealt with financially. We'll talk about what the next meeting is, I'll try to come up with something before the next council meeting, so I can announce when the next finance meeting is. But I will set a public hearing, if that's what you want, for this, for the twentieth of February, yea or nay? Unless I hear something else in the meantime.
So, for the members, the, the February sixth, we'll set the public hearing, we always have public speak time, you're always welcome to make a comment, but they may know.
But the public hearing, but the twentieth is when?
The actual vote will happen.
Right. If we get that far. But I think it's in the best interest of both sides in this to get together. I'm going to say that out loud again, okay? All right.
So, is the thirteenth the next finance committee meeting, I'm sorry?
I, I am not sure because there's already a rules committee meeting, and Joe and I and Tom are on the same meeting, and that's at six o'clock. I got to talk it over, we'll announce it, the next meeting, when it is. You'll all get informed, okay? Okay? Will we adjourn?
Lieutenant, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, Stan, we're done.